Great, good evening everyone, welcome to the April 21st, 2021 City of Imperial Beach City Council Meeting. Once again, we are virtual and I want to thank everybody for all their efforts to make this possible. Council members and staff members, please mute yourselves and when speaking is the appropriate time, please announce your name. Want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting on April 21st and thank everyone for their patience and understanding. As we continue to improve our teleconference meeting process, this meeting must comply with the executive order N2920 and all other provisions of state. Law. We hope that everyone is at home, safe and healthy or out and about and healthy and we appreciate your cooperation with everything we're doing to try to get back to normal. Deputy City Clerk will now announce the public comments process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments for any item on the agenda now via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. As no breaks will occur between agenda items, please note in the subject line, the item on the agenda that you wish to comment on. Specify if you would like your comment to be read aloud or just be entered into the record. Written comments will be read by the city clerk or staff for only up to three minutes. Public comments will be accepted until the mayor announces that public comment for that item is closed. For providing oral comments during this meeting, join Zoom via desktop computer, cellphone app or telephone. The meeting details are located on the first page of the agenda. Members of the public will not be shown on video. You will be able to speak when called upon. When it is the appropriate time, use the raised hand feature on the desktop phone app or press star nine on your telephone. Public comments will be limited to three minutes so that business can be effectively completed at the meeting.
Great, thank you so much. Deputy City Clerk Cabayo, can you please take the role?
Yes, Councilmember Aguirre.
Aguirre here.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez.
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher.
Fisher here.
Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs.
Spriggs here.
Mayor De Dina.
De Dina present. And now I would like to, thank you very much everyone and I'd now like to ask Environmental Director Chris Helmer to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Everyone, please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Environmental Director Helmer, we do appreciate it. Thank you so much. And now I'd like to ask, we have the report reimbursement disclosure reports on assignments and committees for the city council and then I would like to invite each council member to speak in the order as typically seated on the diet, starting with Councilmember Gary, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 8th, I attended the MTS Board of Directors where we approved, during which we approved our fiscal year 2020 capital improvements projects, which has an estimated federal and non-federal funding levels. MTS staff is going to start a listening tour to better understand what are the community's priorities and interests when it comes to capital investments and infrastructure. So I requested that at MTS, we create a more formal process to engage the community in a meaningful way when it comes to capital investments. And then on April 9th, as the MTS representative at the Board of Directors at Sandag, I attended that meeting. And I had opportunity to step in for Mayor De Dina when, during the meeting, because he had to leave. So I was happy to do that on his behalf. During that board vote, we voted in favor of a resolution that passed to direct staff at Sandag to consider, as we worked to draft the Regional Transportation Plan 2021, that we put emphasis on disadvantaged communities that have historically been plagued by pollution, communities like Imperial Beach. You know, that we focus on alternatives for transportation for disadvantaged communities, that we create consistency with local climate action plans. And that, you know, we promote local workforce engagement and project labor agreements so that we can ensure safe working conditions for all projects that are going to be spearheaded through this regional transportation plan. And then on April 17th, I was invited to participate in the Progressive Labor Summit to discuss protecting workers' rights and working families alongside many other elected officials from the county. I just wanted to mention that because the Labor Council, who's the entity that organizes summit, has played a huge role in stepping up for the South Bay during COVID. Just as an example, through their food drives, they have fed 60,000 families in South Bay and have provided over 1.6 million pounds of food and for food relief here in the south. And then last night, I attended the US EPA, USMCA NIPA Public Scoping Meeting. And this is the beginning of a process that will take place to listen to community and stakeholder input as it relates to how and when investments will be made to address and mitigate cross-border pollution. This has been in the making, as we all know. We are very much focused on investments that are US-based so that we can have control of how and when the cross-border flows, when they're impacting our community, are treated. So I'm sure there's going to be a lot more discussion on that in the days to come. And then finally, I want to remind everybody, this Saturday, April 24th, starting at nine, there will be a second food drive for all the residents here in Imperial Beach. It will be first come, first served basis. It will be contactless. We are looking for volunteers to help us set up the food boxes. So if anybody's up for it and wants to show up at seven in the morning, you're very welcome to come and help us out. And this event is sponsored by the Labor Council, Murphy's Produce with a Purpose, Feeding San Diego, UDAW and Iron Workers Local 229. So hopefully, we can all see you there and help us spread the word on that. So that's it for me, Insatria, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
Good evening, everybody. I don't have anything to report, thank you.
Great, Councilmember Labor Gonzalez.
Good evening, everyone. On the 9th of April, myself and Andy Hall, we had a meeting with Mike Hess in regards to organizing a function of some sort. Obviously, the big issue is doing it safely during this COVID time. And once us moving into a less restrictive tier can accommodate that, then so be it. The meeting went extremely well. On the 13th of April, I attended a IV committee addressing the growing issue of homelessness, spearheaded by Pastor John. There are a lot of great individuals there and I look forward to additional meetings to address that growing issue in the city. And then on the 14th, I attended the budget workshop. It's really great to see so many active members of our great community voicing, being proactive in the process, giving their insight. It really makes me proud to represent this great city that we live in. And on the 17th, this past Saturday, I attended a food drive which was sponsored by the Labor Council, Murphy's Produce, the same individuals that are hosting the food drive for this Saturday. Supervisor Nora Vargas was there, Councilwoman Vivian Moreno. Great event. It's great to give back to those individuals that are less fortunate. And then today, I had a meeting with Courtney, Andy Hall, with Sylvie Fransek of the San Diego Bike Coalition to hopefully organize an event, you know, once again, once things are opened up somewhat, but a bike route going through the city, having various locations where we can socially distance, stop, interact. So hopefully that can get arranged this summer sometime. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and props to fellow council members Gary and Labor Gonzalez for their involvement in the food drives. That is really a very worthy cause. So, good job, colleagues. On the 12th, I attended the League of California Cities Monthly San Diego Division Meeting. We had a lengthy presentation from the County Water Authority. The general manager, Sandy Curl, made a presentation regarding all of the sources of water, drinking water for San Diego, the county, the cost picture and water supply picture going forward. I asked her about the role of the pure water program, which is going to provide between a fourth and a third of the water in the future after it comes fully online in the next three or four years or so. And she indicated that that would be, you know, a big part of the water picture going forward. The, we also had a, I also provided an update on, as I do every month, on where we are with the coastal cities in working with the Coastal Commission and trying to develop a more viable collaboration. A number of the other coastal cities are interested in having a sort of separate workshop or discussion with me on that and that's something I welcome very much so that we can take a unified position. The other point that I tried to make at the meeting is that I wanted to invite to that discussion, which is a deeper dive into the coastal issues involving climate change and sea level rise and adaptation strategies. I wanted to invite the inland cities in the San Diego County area because we really need everybody to feel that they're in the same boat. It's not just the coastal cities and within the coastal cities, it's not just the coastal residents. The coastline is our heartbeat in California. Wherever you live, that's really what makes the state go. That's our center of recreation. That's what brings people to California. That's what locates some of the top high-tech companies in the world in the state of California, including San Diego County. So we are in it together. The viability of the coastline is something that I hope I can help make all of our inland residents and elected officials aware of as well. On the 15th, the Coastal Cities Group Leadership Committee met and we discussed legislative amendments that might be needed to update the 40-odd-year-old California Coastal Act, which was written well before climate change and sea level rise issues were on the minds of most people. And we have an upcoming Sea Level Rise Working Group meeting this Friday that should be interesting when we talk about some of these amendments, some of which may not be very popular with the Coastal Commission. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thanks. I seem to spend most of my time the last two weeks addressing the fact that we had about 550 million gallons of sewage discharged into our beach for more than three weeks. And last week, I talked to Deborah Sullivan, the head of the EPA's Region Nine, about this issue. First, I, what I said was that it should be the City of Imperial Beach that is the only agency that actually responds to water spills when they happen and follows up with the federal government. It needs to be other agencies that that play a role in actually dealing with the international border, but it's clear that and I want to think Environmental Director Chris Helmer seems to be the only person that follows up when there's an international spill on an international boundary in the United States of America. So that's unacceptable. She agreed. Number two, what I did say also that is unacceptable is that the United States government allowing spills to go on and not say anything and not do anything for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks and months, last year, nine months, is completely unacceptable and it shouldn't be again, once again, the City of Imperial Beach is trying to fix the problem. You know, that's why we're, we filed a lawsuit, right? So she agreed and I said, we can't continue like this. Whether or not you build, if you build something in three to five years, we can't continue to allow Mexico to basically dump sewage unabated on an Imperial Beach without any repercussions, without any other agency. At the local state, federal level, you name it, not a single agency makes a public statement. They're happy letting IV to be on its own. It's clear. And so there are many calls to, so many of our colleagues to say, this, this can't continue. It's not our job to manage the United States border, but we have other agencies that should be doing their job too and other public officials, they need to be public on that. I made that comment to the US Consul of Tijuana and made it clear that this needs to be public. The US Foreign, the US State Department needs to publicly state that it's unacceptable for the government of Mexico to dump raw sewage and toxic waste on us. So every, and what I finally said to, to Region Nine Supervisor or Director Administrator, which is the entire Western United States and the Hawaiian and Pacific Islands, is that first, she needs to be talking to the director of the new director of the EPA, Michael Regan, who is professor to be in love with environmental justice. So I said, I can't wait to see him here. What I told her was in the Trump administration, he came in office, the top people in the EPA came to Imperial Beach immediately. They didn't wait. They came to Imperial Beach immediately. So changed administration, what I told her was, things are actually worse right now for us. They're actually worse. So that's, that's not good. I said the EPA needs to get the State Department to basically Secretary of State to actually weigh in on this and deal with Mexico. It's clear that no one in the State Department is putting pressure on Mexico at all. So to her credit, she agreed that a lot more needs to be done. Apparently, the EPA has asked their International Division as well as their International Division to start pushing more on this in Mexico, but it's clear that we're back to where we've always been, which is spills happen unabated, there's no notification, nothing happens and IV has, is the only agency that responds. So, but it's clear, we can't continue for this for another three to five years. And it's clear that our residents are absolutely suffering. I haven't received more emails or calls or texts on any other issue in six years than on the poor folks in their homes more down where you live, Councilmember Spriggs, or Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs, on the southern part of IV that are suffering, getting sick in their homes and getting headaches, et cetera. So we're a long way from fixing this mess and it's clear that the EPA needs to be focused on fixing stuff on the United States side of the border instead of being wishy-washy about whether or not they should throw money at Mexico, who clearly don't have the capacity to manage anything at all at any level with our funding. So if I sound mad, it's because I think Chris and I are really tired of addressing this and, and it's just the round robin, the endless round robin of our United States government, the most powerful country in the world that seems to be powerless in stopping toxic waste and sewage on the border. So with that, I'll move on to happier and funner things. And again, I want to thank all of you and you will help out on this and especially Environmental Director Chris Helmer. And with that, we have, oh, and then the State of the City, which is really positive, will be on Monday, April 26, 6:00 PM. It's virtual, hopefully for the last time ever, the only and last time. So you guys can, can, can call in, but anyway. So that should be nice. I did acknowledge all of you, but it's, it'll be edited. Courtney's doing that. And we're going to give you out some awards to folks in the community, which we'll announce as well. So again, thanks, everybody, especially Courtney for helping and Sandra for helping make that happen. And with that, Chris Helmer has an announcement on our garage sale and home front cleanup.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this weekend, this Saturday, we're going to have our citywide garage sale. This is our annual event. We didn't hold it last year, but we're back to the normal schedule this year. Starts at 8:00 AM in the morning and until you sell out of your stuff, we're having citywide. We've had over 90 residents already sign up this year to participate. So we got quite a few people signed up. And then the following weekend, on the Saturday, the, the first weekend in May is our home front cleanup event. And we're back to doing our large bulky item drop-off at Mar Vista High School. This is the same event we've done, probably running on 12, 13 years now in a row that we've done this. So residents are very familiar and very grateful to have this opportunity to throw away large bulky items at Mar Vista High School. That's the first Saturday in May, the following Saturday. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Helmer. Great event. I know I've got stuff, we're accumulating stuff in our backyard, so I can't wait to clean it all up. And now, another thing that happened last week, I think most of you and obviously our residents saw the the gnarly and lot rescues and loss of life, CPR at the pier, folks jumping off the pier, you know, our heroic lifeguards as well as our firefighters and sheriffs are on the scene. One, one person died, but if you've ever jumped up here, off the pier to make a rescue, you know how gnarly it is, making it, doing it at night when the water's polluted, isn't fun. Although Mr. Lieutenant Linkwess is going to talk, did tell me it was a little warmer than he thought it would be, I think, something like that. So anyway, Chief French is here to speak on that. And again, I want to thank, just to underscore, thank all of our public safety staff for being on it in the middle of the night. And two lives were saved that evening and we lost one, but I really appreciate the extra effort and amazing advanced technical skill that's required to do those types of rescues and deal with that type of operation. So Chief French, take it away. Is Chief French there?
Mayor, this is Assistant City Manager Cortez. I know Chief French was having some technical issues and wasn't going to be on the phone. However, we do have Captain Jason Linkwess with us right now.
Jason, please take it away. Is it Captain or Lieutenant? I'm sorry, I didn't say Captain.
Captain.
Sorry, Captain Linkwess.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, please give us an update on what happened and thanks again.
Yeah, no problem. The, the real props go to the sheriff and the fire department for hoisting that guy up. That's a very difficult thing to do. So for me, I got the page and I'm sure Chief French has a lot more to show and say about this, but I got a page at 12:40 in the morning and then responded and the incident went from one person unconscious in the water to three while I was en route. I guess the two roommates jumped in to help. But when I got here, they had already pulled one person up and then I went in on the north side for the other two that were hanging on to the pilings. So my part was pretty small and went out basically outside the surf right there and then brought in two. But I can answer any questions if anyone's got any questions.
Mayor, you're muted.
I have a question. This is Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs and do you have any idea what the, was this a prank or a sort of fraternity pledge there or what, what prompted that individual to jump in and was that first person that went in the one who is deceased?
Yeah, so from my understanding, they were taking a selfie picture on the platform at the bathrooms out there. They might have been fishing or hanging out on the pier and then as far as I know, he, he jumped in. But I don't know the exact details. The sheriffs probably have more interview information on that.
This is Chief French. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. Thanks, Chief French. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was having technical difficulties with the Zoom. It totally blacked out and then I was trying to connect right from, so I apologize for that. What Jason Linkwess said was a lot of heroic efforts by sheriffs, fire and lifeguards. And one of the main points I want to really point out is people not jumping off the pier at night or during the day and staying out of the ocean when lifeguards are not on duty. You know, this could have been a tragic event that could have been prevented if, you know, people drinking and jumping off the pier, you know, is either a stunt or, you know, just thinking they're having fun and that ocean is dangerous daytime or nighttime. So the heroic efforts of all the public safety personnel on scene, you know, this is a tragic event and we hate to see things like this happen, but we did save two lives and it was a team effort. The sheriffs and fire pulled the first patient over the railing like he had said and started CPR and got pulses back at the hospital, but the patient still did not make it, but putting that rope back over and keeping a hold of those other two victims and getting them partway in and then Jason Linkwess, you know, got them the rest of the way in to the beach and they were evaluated by paramedics and decided not to go by medical transport. But just like to thank all the heroic efforts of lifeguards, but still trying to tell the citizens to not jump off the pier. Later that day, we had another person that jumped off the pier. And they just need to realize that it's not a safe thing to do. So if you have any questions for me, sorry for the technical difficulties I was having.
No, thanks. First, thanks right to all our sheriffs and our firefighters and our lifeguards. You know, that teamwork is really important. You know, there was a famous case in the eighties where the communication didn't happen, so someone drowned because the lifeguards weren't called, but I think that you know, there's a reason why we spend investment communications efforts. So are there any questions for Chief French?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, just a quick comment. I just want to commend Chief French and the entire team for their heroic efforts, which you know, it was bad to lose someone at sea, but it could have been much worse. So thank you for all of your efforts and your work. Great job.
Thank you.
Good. Well, thanks, guys. And having jumped off the pier to make rescues and done CPR on the south side of the pier, I know what it's like, but I didn't do it at night and, and even worse, and polluted water makes it all that much more worse, which was something we emphasized to the EPA. So good job, guys, and we appreciate all your efforts and that's why we're putting public safety first and foremost all summer, all spring and all the time, right? Because, you know, this shouldn't happen, but it does because people are careless and they do dumb things. So and it results in loss of life. So with that, we'll move on to City Hall, I'm sorry, City Manager Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Manager Hall and Mayor and Council and members of the public. I just wanted to announce that the presentation from the Port District has been delayed until a future meeting. So I just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. That'll be item number one. So City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk Cabayo, do you have any public comments?
I will begin with the members of the public participating through Zoom. Members of the public, if you would like to speak during this public comment section, use the raise hand option on the desktop phone app or press star nine on your telephone. You will be called upon in the order received. I do see three raised hands. First, I'm going to call on Eric Seiverson. Please unmute yourself and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Eric Seiverson, Imperial Beach native, and just because I'll use 1311 Connecticut Street, Imperial Beach, California 91932. In terms of the public safety message, Mayor, that's the most in public, that's the most important message you can give right now. You're going to have more people jumping off that pier and you're going to have more problems on that beach because the average person is ready to let loose, let alone the non-average person. I commend, I commend the sheriff, the fire. Once again, public safety needs to be paid more, needs to be respected more, needs to be held up more. And the city needs to consider a 24-hour lifeguard public safety service because that beach is always open and it seems to me we're making rescues off hours more than we're making rescues on hours. Beyond that, Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, I hope you will contact somebody at the San Diego Bike Coalition in 19, when Colin Parent did a presentation on complete streets of the San Diego City, Imperial Beach City Council, I asked at that time if he would sponsor a bike rodeo and actually give bikes away. Because to build bike paths in Imperial Beach and not give bikes is, is not Imperial Beach, as far as I'm concerned. You give the bike, they find their way and you build the path. But anyways, beyond that, the Labor Council Food Programs are a wonderful, wonderful thing. I will note that at Pastor John's place, the Neighborhood Center has been feeding Imperial Beach at least for 32 years that I've been assisting with them. And when it comes to that, I spoke to Andy Hall. I happened to see him at Neighborhood Center one day with the homeless issue that Pastor John and Jose deal with. They get a lot of dumping at that particular property, large items, and they bear the cost of that. And sometimes I help Jose and sometimes I'm not able to. If somehow the city could help them with that, that, that would be a great help. Beyond that, they won wonderful programs there and I hope the Labor Council could partner with them and perhaps grow their program. Other than that, I don't have much else to say. I will speak on the consent calendar about this sewage thing because the city has missed the opportunity of a lifetime with the passing of the Trump administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Seiverson. The next person with their hand raised is somebody from the Sun Coast Market Co-op. Please unmute yourself and you will have three minutes. Hello?
Hi, this is Camry Verell-Frank with Sun Coast Market.
Hi, this is Camry Verell-Frank with Sun Coast Market Co-op. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Well, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give the council a quick update on Sun Coast Market Co-op. I apologize, my name is not showing up there. My name is Camry Verell-Frank, and I'm a resident of IB. I just want to let you know, when the pandemic hit, you know, we focused our efforts on meeting urgent community needs. We distributed produce boxes with great produce from specialty produce for several months, and we raised funds to donate 180 boxes to people in need. We distributed census information and mass on behalf of the city, and we participated in the mayor's task forces and in the Rapid Response Task Force led by the IB Neighborhood Center. Our board and volunteers donated many hours helping with food distributions, coordinating volunteers, and even calling people with needs to connect them to resources. We slowly moved to online healthy eating and cooking classes to stay connected to the community. And it took a while to get up and running, but in the last four months, by leveraging partnerships, we have provided free classes to 312 kids, teens, and their families. And we are looking forward to restarting in-person events soon. We do education, not only because it's a part of our mission, but also because it's a foot in the door to introduce people to the co-op model and to engage them in this good food movement. I am excited to share that we have selected a real estate broker and are now looking for a location in Imperial Beach. We are also seeking funding to raise $3 million in startup costs needed to open the store. We are now 655 owners strong, and this includes households and over 70 businesses, which are listed on the business supporters page on our website, if you're interested in checking that out. We are looking for the city's financial support to help open this important resource for our community by providing possibly a low interest or forgivable loan, tax credits, or other strategies. I just wanted to give you all a heads up that we will be reaching out to each of you, hoping that we can meet with each of the council members and already have a meeting in the works with the mayor and city manager, so that we can present to you a specific proposal for assistance for this important project. Finally, it's important for people to know that a food co-op is not a typical business. Our mission is not to make profits, but to meet a community need and to serve the whole community. We look forward to partnering with the city on this important effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last person that I have with the raised hand is Dave Frank. Please unmute yourself, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. IB Arts Bureau is pleased to announce a new mural project funded by the Chuck and Ernestine Kruitskamp Foundation. This project will see the installation of five new murals in the city, all to be completed by May 16. Next slide, please. As part of this project, the foundation is working with the acclaimed production team from Articus Entertainment on the creation of powerful new documentary film, The Case for Kindness. The film will feature a number of notable activists, entertainers, scientists, and leaders making a compelling case for kindness in our world. The documentary will feature Imperial Beach and the five murals that are dedicated to kindness and love. The city manager and staff are providing support, coordination, and equipment for the project, as well as liaising with the donors and general public. The IB Arts Bureau, a nonprofit public charity, is coordinating with the building owners and managing the artists' art installations, as well as the final day mural tour and celebration. Next slide, please. The largest of the mural would be adjacent to Ladder Rain Ministries at Florence and Palm. The artist is Carly Ely, and she'll be representing grasping hands and a glowing heart on an ethereal background. Next slide. There will also be a mural in Veterans Park done by IB's own artist prodigy, Isabella Anderson. Bella's beautiful artwork will show a young couple whispering secrets on a colorful background of flowers and foliage. Next slide. Third mural will be installed by the IB Arts Bureau at Sports Park Recreation Center Building. It will be a representation of the pier with the sea and skies background for large letters spelling out "We are IB." Members of the public will be invited to show how our city residents can do great things together. Next slide. There will also be a mural at Pacific Realty at Third and Palm. The artist is Marissa Quinn. She will show a surfer interacting with dolphins on a wave with a yellow sunset background. Next slide. On the Imperial Palms Apartments at Seacoast in Ebony, IB artist Michelle Lubin will show this beautiful rendering of a hummingbird and butterfly being fed by human hands on a colorful black background. Next slide, please. Mural project will begin tomorrow and will culminate with a community event at Sports Park on the morning of May 15, where members of the public will be invited to write their names, draw figures, and put handprints on the "We are IB" mural. Finally, there will be a mural tour and bike ride on May 16 at 1:00 PM, beginning at the Ladder Rain mural. The bike ride will take about an hour and a half, where participants will get to meet and hear from many of the artists who designed and painted the murals.
Sorry, Mr. Frank, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can finish. This is the mayor. You can finish. Go ahead and finish.
The bike ride takes about an hour and a half, and the participants will get to meet and hear from many of the artists who designed and painted the murals. The ride will end at Sports Park, where there will be live local band and socially distant celebration. We hope you will all attend. Thank you very much. We'd like to especially thank the Kruitskamp Foundation and the city's manager and staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Frank. That's good news. See, I told you there'd be more good news. That's great news. So really like to see that and the focus on kindness. So and really all this funded by a family and donor that have strong roots in Imperial Beach. So a lot of great generosity and kindness and doing good for everybody. So that's awesome. And with that, I think we have the public comment period is now closed unless there are additional public comments. Deputy City Clerk?
No, that was it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And then I'd like for that then to entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items numbers one through three.
Mr. Mayor, there is a public comment on the consent calendar before we take the motion. Mr. Seiverson, you have your hand raised. Please unmute yourself, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Eric Seiverson, Imperial Beach native. Concerning the ongoing emergency declaration at the Tijuana River, just a few comments. I actually was going to request that this be moved from consent, because I feel like with as much information as the mayor disseminated, we should have an opportunity to question the mayor and Mr. Homer on this issue. But that's unnecessary. Also, seeing the last public comment, it should be made clear that people can use PowerPoint. It should have been made clear a year ago, actually, that people could have used. I could have presented you a PowerPoint every twice a month, if you like, on any topic. So that's a little disappointing at this stage, April 2021, to see that. As it relates to the Tijuana River sewage, as Mrs. Gary and the mayor and everyone else mentioned, there was a NEPA scoping. So we're not even in Sequois anymore. We're in NEPA. Someone needs to find former operations manager Nicholas Chappa, who was a NEPA specialist, because he would be good at the IBWC right now. Anybody would be good at the IBWC right now. What the mayor basically implied in his public comments at the beginning was that there is no one within the Biden administration who knows Imperial Beach, Tijuana, San Diego, the border, Tijuana River. Sewage is an issue. No one. Everyone is new. Anthony Wheeler, Trump-appointed head of the EPA, new Imperial Beach, new San Diego, had been to the border, had talked frankly about fixing this issue. Dane Harkins, Trump-appointed commissioner, International Boundary and Water Commission, an avid and public supporter of Wild Coast and Frey's trash booms. The San Diego Field Office has no one in it. There's no one to contact. You can contact Socia Rhonda in Texas and tell her that there's pollution, and she'll reply with a field office report the next day, and an OES, and a COES, and oh, yes, oh, yes. In 2019, I asked you guys to attach to the National Declaration of Emergency. You're not going to get the project you want. I've been in all the canyons. Mexico is poisoning us from every waterway there is right now. And it is a damn shame that we're suing America. Every canyon is being poisoned. Goat Canyon is ridiculous. There is sewage popping through storm drains in Mexico and just collecting at that collector. I just goat smugglers, yogurt, stewards, Sylvia, a constant flow that ended today. Today is the first day that there was no flow out of the main channel. It's ridiculous, and the Biden administration will not help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seiverson. It doesn't look like there's any further public comments on the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs, move approval of consent calendar.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Are you a second?
I'll let our deputy city clerk clear it up. Councilor Paloma was first being second.
I believe it was a motion by Spriggs and a second by Aguirre to approve Consent Calendar Item Numbers One through Three. Councilmember Aguirre, how do you vote?
Aguirre, aye.
Councilmember Libra Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Libra Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote? Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
You're muted, Mr. Fisher.
There we go. Fisher, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs, how do you vote?
I vote aye. Thank you.
Mayor Doudina, how do you vote?
Doudina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great. Now we get to public hearing number one. Thanks, everyone. The Martian Ash Imperial Beach Incorporated applicant consideration of regular coastal permit, design review case site plan, or administrative sign permit and categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guideline for the construction of a new single-story 4,201-square-foot commercial building at 740 Palm Avenue in the CMU One zone. Councilmember Fisher has an announcement.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. I have a potential conflict of interest because I do live within 500 feet of this project. And so I would, I will be recusing myself and logging out of this meeting. And I believe that staff will let me know when those items cleared.
Did, Mr. Fisher, how many feet do you actually live? It seemed like it'd be like, must be like 495 or something.
That's a great question. I'm trusting Tyler on this one. I don't have, possibly, but I believe it's very, very close.
Okay. All right. Great. Thanks. I won't tell everybody where you live. But anyway, okay, thanks. Because we live in the same kind of zone, right? Anyway. All right. Thanks. Okay, we'll continue then. I have a gavel to know, instead of my coffee cup, declaring the public hearing open, and associate planner Open Shaw will give the report.
And Mayor, this is Tyler Foltz, P Development Director. I just wanted to make a quick announcement before Megan presents. Before we get into this PowerPoint, I just wanted to note that 740 Palm, which is where this project is located, is one of the sites or the site with a regulatory safety permit application for retail cannabis use. There's only one in the city. That use is separately regulated, and that's per Section 4.60 of the municipal code. The location for this type of use is provided by buffers of 900 feet from schools, parks, or playgrounds where children assemble. Other cannabis permitted uses, city or state licensed daycare facilities, and drug and/or alcohol rehabilitation treatment services and facilities. So one question was that came up is bicentennial triangle. Just wanted to note here that that is not a location where it's not a park or playground where children assemble, which is why it's not included on this buffer map. Just wanted to clarify these points. What you're reviewing tonight is not for the use. Again, that's under Section 4.60. What you're reviewing is for the design of a new commercial building. Those are the limitations of the review tonight. So just wanted to make those notes before we get into the presentation.
Thank you.
So, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, tonight I'll be presenting on the Martian Ash project at 740 Palm Avenue. Next slide, please. Project is proposing the demolition of the existing structure and construction of a new single-story 4,201-square-foot commercial building at 740 Palm Avenue. Next slide, please. The project site is located in the CMU One General Commercial Mixed Use Zone. The surrounding uses are similarly located in the CMU One zone, and the parcel is 22,651 square feet. Next slide, please. Here is an aerial view of the site. The cross streets are Delaware Street as well as Palm Avenue. Next slide, please. Here are images of the existing site. Next slide, please. Here's an image of the properties to the east, which are commercial. Next slide, please. Here's an image of the properties to the west, which are similarly commercial. Next slide, please. Here are images of the properties to the north, which are residential. Next slide, please. Here are images of the properties to the south, which include the Hampton Inn and Suites. Next slide, please. This is an image of the site plan. The site is 4,000, the project's proposing 4,201-square-foot, single-story commercial space. Pedestrian access is provided off of the parking lot in the rear, which leads to an entrance on the rear of the building, but as well as to a five-foot-wide permeable paver walkway, which loops around to the front main entrance of the of the building. Then off of Palm Avenue, there's two pedestrian walkways. One is a 10-foot-wide pedestrian access walkway, and then that includes some steps. If you go a little bit further north, there's an ADA-accessible pedestrian walkway that ties right into that five-foot-wide permeable paver walkway, and that leads directly to the building's entrance in the front. Vehicle ingress and egress is provided both off of the alley as well as a curb cut on Delaware. And then the project provides 25 open parking spaces, 20 of which are standard parking spaces, two electrical vehicle charging spaces, two ADA van accessible spaces, and one carpool space/hampul space. The project would also provide bicycle rack parking. Next slide, please. Here's an image of the floor plan. Next slide, please. Here's an image of the roof plan. The roof includes the proposed solar photovoltaic panels, as well as there is a circular decorative element, which would be utilized to screen all the mechanical equipment that would be located on the roof. Next slide, please. Here's the proposed signage plan for the project. As you can see, the proposed signage is located on a site plan located in the bottom right hand of the screen. The red circles indicate the location of the signage. Starting on the right, there is a wall sign proposed that says March and Ash. It's going to be utilizing channel letters, and it will be halo lit. It's 44 and a half square feet in size. Then if you start moving north on the site plan, you'll see the first monument sign. And then if you continue back there along Delaware Street, there is another monument sign provided there. The monument signs are both internally illuminated and dual-faced. Each of the signage faces are a little bit less than 20 square feet. So the monument signage in total per signage is 40 square feet, a little bit less than that. And then they each are three feet in height. And next slide, please. Here's the lighting slash electrical plan for the project. So this is where you can see the proposed lighting. They are going to have proposed LED pole lighting located throughout the parking lot, as well as there are some landscape LED light fixtures lighting the walkways and the trash enclosure area. And then there is lighting affixed to the wall. Should be noted that the lighting plan, the lighting is actually being also reviewed by a third-party consultant, and they're reviewing the lighting plan to ensure that it's compliant with safety regulations. Also, as a part of the project, we will be approving a final lighting plan to ensure that there are no negative impacts related to lighting for the surrounding neighboring areas or uses. Next slide, please. Here's landscape plan. The project is proposing to have 23% of the site landscape. 15% is required. There will be a mixture of trees and shrubs and a variety of ground covers. And there's a biofiltration basin located fronting Palm Avenue. Next slide, please. Here are images of the types of trees proposed. Next slide, please. These are images of the variety of shrubs utilized. Next slide, please. Here are images of the variety of ground cover that is proposed for the project, including the types of plants in the biofiltration basin. Next slide, please. Here is the northern elevation for the site. The overall building height is 29 feet in height. Uh, here is the northern elevation for the site. The overall building height is twenty-nine feet in height. That's including that circular, uh, screening element. And then without that screening element, the height of the building is twenty-two feet and six inches. Next slide please. Uh, this is the western elevation for the site. Uh, the internal floor to ceiling height would be seventeen feet and three inches as well. Uh, next slide please. Here's an image of the eastern elevation. Next slide please. Here's an image of the southern elevation. And on this image, you can also see where, what the proposed signage looks like. Um, so you see the wall sign as well as the monument sign. Next slide please. Here are images of the building materials board. The applicant is utilizing a variety of different colors and varied materials for the project. Next slide please. Here is a project rendering of the site. Uh, you can also see the signage here as well. Next slide please. Here's another rendering looking at the building from Delaware Street. Next slide please. Here's a rendering of the project looking at it from the parking lot. Next slide please. And here's a rendering of the site viewing it from Palm Avenue. Next slide please. So the designer review board recommended approval of the project design with recommendations. Um, all of these recommendations have been incorporated in the resolution, ex, with the exception of raising the height of the circular screening element. Uh, without specific item, the applicant reviewed the possibility of raising the height of that element. However, they determined that the initial proposal mi- meets the design aesthetics of what they felt like the building should look like for them. Uh, next slide please. So the recommendation is that the city council adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two approving the project. And if that resolution is adopted, that the city council would also adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, confirming the time of completion for the project. Other options, council can approve the project with modifications, disapprove the project, or you can continue the public hearing to a specific future meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Deputy City Clerk Kawala. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, Miss Mayor, we do have several public comments that came in via email. But first I would like to go through the members of the public joining us by Zoom. If you would like to comment on this particular item, please use the raised hand feature on your desktop or phone app or press star nine on your telephone. Uh, you will be called upon in the order received. So first I would like to call upon, uh, Carol Green. Please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Hi, um, I'm, my name is Carol Green and, uh, my daughter actually works at the CVS that is right by this location. And, um, during the pandemic, uh, with the mask on and proper social distancing, I've walked around this green fence that's up there. You know, probably a couple hundred, um, times, um, it, while I'm waiting for her to get out of work. And I've been wondering what is going to be there. So I, um, looked it up and I was just, I, I, now, now that I'm in this meeting, I understand that the difference that you all are doing. But I am wondering when the public will be notified that this is indeed, or is it indeed going to be, um, a marijuana, um, business? And I'm just, because I, I couldn't find it in any of the reports. Um, and I was wondering what it was that all the people that she works with are like, oh, what is it? I wonder what it is. And none of the signage notifies the public of what the business would be. And although I don't have any, you know, the, the renderings look nice enough, but it seems that what will, the business that will be conducted is far more important than, um, how the building looks. So I'm just wondering when the public will be notified of that and if there's a, if there's a plan moving forward on that. So those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Uh, City Manager Hall, do you want to respond to that?
Thank you, Mayor. This is City Manager Hall. Yeah, the use of this particular project was determined by the city council, um, several months ago, I believe almost a year ago. Um, so the, the use was approved quite some time ago. And what we're doing tonight is now just looking at the building to make sure that it meets the requirements that the city council established for this particular use in our community.
Will you notify the public of the use? I mean, I realize it happened at the city council, but not, not everybody goes to every city council meeting as thrilling as they are. I just wondering if you'll have a sign up or something.
Mayor and council, um, we don't typically have signs that we put up for each use in the community. Um, I don't believe that this was any sort of a secret in the community. There was a long, very public process of probably, boy, it had to have been at least five or 10 meetings. Um, that would be outside the norm. However, if the city council would like us to, um, stray from our normal procedures and put up a sign that this is a future, um, site for cannabis, uh, staff will follow the direction of the city council.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, um, the next, uh, person is Frank Erdesam. Please state your city of residence, uh, before you begin and you will have three minutes. Frank Erdesam?
Uh, yes, um, good afternoon. My name is Frank Ertaasen.
Sorry about that.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I lived in Imperial Beach over forty-five years. Uh, currently I reside in Coronado. Um, I have been representing March and Ash through this entire process. Uh, we're here to answer any questions. We've been working closely with staff throughout the entire process. We're proud of the project that we're bringing forward here, uh, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just so the public knows, that's our former park commissioner Frank Ertaasen. Thanks for being here, Frank. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, the next person that I have, um, with the raised hand is Kathleen Lipit. Please state, uh, your city of residence. Unmute yourself and you will have three minutes. Kathleen Lipit?
Sorry, didn't mute, unmute. Sorry, I live in this, the city of Poway, but I work in the city of San Diego. Uh, first, thank you very much. The rendering is beautiful of the commercial building and landscaping. I wondered whether the city will require the applicant to strictly adhere to their architectural renderings as were submitted. Sometimes there's a lot of leeway and a lot of money can be saved on superficial changes that the city may not want. Um, I also wanted to share some of the weaknesses other cities have recognized only after adopting regulations, uh, intended to mitigate problems with permitted marijuana businesses. Because sometimes these regulations are creatively exploited in very unexpected ways. Uh, marijuana businesses are unique. They're not really very similar to community friendly businesses. Regulations that traditionally have been used for community friendly businesses uh, exposes the city to well-intentioned regulations that are often exploited. The property is said not to directly abut a residential zone, yet the nearby residences do seem to be very close in proximity. And that seems to be problematic. Children living in those residents will be viewing a business, uh, an active business, and they will understand the purpose of what its purpose is to sell marijuana products. And now that will add to their perception of acceptance and normalization. Regarding the lighting in other communities, powerful LED light fixtures have created problems for nearby neighbors. Given the close proximity again to the, to the residents, this potential seems likely. Although it is noted that they will be shielded or focused to mitigate its intrusion, that doesn't, I wouldn't think that that would completely take care of the problem. But it also brings up a secondary problem, which is that that creates opportunities for trespass where it is where that light is shielded and protected from people being able to, um, not be seen. And last to the issue of signage, a forty-foot freestanding monument seems unnecessarily large. And perhaps the hours of any halo or backlit light should be limited to store hours. The creativity marijuana businesses have shown in finding other ways to enhance their commercial advertising exposure is extensive. Some examples include, but are not limited to sign twirlers, billboards, awnings, umbrellas, and other forms of advertising that extend beyond the premise and into the communities. So strict limitations on signage probably would be help. So thank you very much for your time. That's all.
Ms. Lipit, you're out of time. Thank you. Okay, and I do have several comments that came in via email. I'll go ahead and read those now. The first one is from Sandra Brillhart. And it says, "I support the application for this commercial use on Palm Avenue and respectfully request council to approve it. The project's location is ideal for the proposed use. Its design is attractive and enhances the neighborhood. The ingress and egress minimizes traffic conflicts. The proposed security measures will help ensure safety and prohibit access by minors. And there is ample parking for cars and bicycles. I hope that the carpool parking space and bike closets mean that they will encourage their employees to get to work by means other than a single occupant vehicle. While I appreciate the use of varied textures and building materials, I feel that the large circular rooftop screening is the predominant design feature on some elevations. I agree with the DRB's recommendations for the circular screen and wish that the applicant had incorporated them in the final design, as I think they would have made the screen less monolithic and the building more attractive overall. Nevertheless, IB is fortunate to have such a qualified and professional applicant for our first dispensary. It is a testament to diligence to staff, council, and the community in crafting IB's ordinance for cannabis facilities." The next comment that we have via email is from Chris Hilger. And it says, "Mayor Dedina and Imperial Beach City Council, my name is Christine Hilger. I live at thirteen hundred East Lane in Imperial Beach. I was looking at the plans for seven hundred forty Palm Avenue online. It's a nice looking building, a definite improvement over a now defunct user car business. What is glaringly omitted throughout the information presented is what type commercial business is going into this project. I finally looked up March, March and Ash and see it's a marijuana dispensary. Why isn't this stated upfront? I believe there should be transparency to the public throughout the approval process. I recall Hampton Inn being noted as the brand hotel going in when it was being approved by the city. So why not the forthright about a marijuana dispensary? Also, under resolution number twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, design slash site review, I B M C nineteen point eighty-one point zero six re, zero. Item eight states, "The proposed use does not have any detrimental effect upon the general health, safety and convenience of persons residing or working in the neighborhood, or is not detrimental or injurious to the value of the property and improvements in the neighborhood. I believe the people who own residential or commercial property nearby may not agree with that. I think it would only be fair to ensure that people know the type of business that is being considered from day one. Thanks for your consideration." The next comment that we have, um, is from, uh, Judy Stang. She doesn't give any information. She just says, "I would like to comment on agenda item public hearing number one," uh, but there's no other information on that. That's it. Um, it looks like we also have another raised hand. Um, somebody calling in on their phone, the last three digits are five nine eight. Could you please, um, identify yourself in your place, your city of residence and then you will have three minutes.
Hello, I'm calling in to, uh, re, excuse me, represent the Heatherington Family Trust, who have a building, a apartment building on thirteenth street. And they have some concerns about the proposal. Uh, and you have mentioned many of them already. We were concerned that it was less than transparent regarding the nature of this commercial business and considering how much it's been a divisive issue throughout its many years. I think it would have been useful to have some sort of signage on the building and certainly in the staff report, at least, uh, a line mentioning what was the nature of the commercial business. Even though I recognize that may not be standard procedure, I think in this particular case, an exception should have ma- been made due to the many years of, uh, work on it. I also feel that it's way too close to residential and will impact the health and welfare of the people who live around it. And the, one of the immediate effects would be the lighting. Um, no matter what you, how you describe that LED lighting, it is going to shine into the residences. And I concur with the suggestion that at least it not be turned on through the night. Although I realize that's counter indicative of the reason why you would leave lights on and that's to reduce crime in the vicinity. Uh, it's kind of a catch twenty-two situation, but it's definitely going to have impact on the residents in the areas. The other area of concern we have is that the signage is going to be quite large. Um, where my family member also lives in, another family member lives in San Diego. They don't allow marijuana outlets to have signage of that size because they don't want to call attention to the surrounding residents regarding, or intrude upon children who might be traveling down the walkway regarding the fact that the city has a marijuana outlet at this location. Their concern for the commercialization and normalization of marijuana for children is grave. And so that's why they like the signage to be small, but particularly the monument signage seems unfortunate. And, um, so in closing, I just think a sign, you've already sort of started this conversation, some sort of signage on the property at the front to let people know what's going on there, I think would be really important and go a long way. Thank you.
This is the mayor. I just want to make sure I'm clear. I didn't get, you, you represent a trust that has a building on thirteenth street. Do you live in Imperial Beach? I didn't get that.
I live in San Diego and, uh, family lives in San Diego, except for their adult son who lives on the property. It's an apartment housing project.
And where is that, where, where, where is that on thirteenth street? At the south end or the north end? Just so I'm clear, this relationship to this project?
It's thirteen oh six.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, thanks. It's, it's, it's in pub, it's in public. So we can just have a conversation instead of feeling like you're grilling you. So sorry about that. Um.
Okay, uh, we have one more, uh, public comment, Mr. Mayor, that came in by email just now from Judy F. It says, um, "I am curious about the hours of operation and how will this impact all the residents and businesses in the area?" Um, that's all I have for public comments on this item.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Um, and, and just everybody knows, you know, we have a different council now, but this was the subject of extensive, public review and, uh, hearings and meetings, arguably the most you've ever had on any, any issue in the city's history. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that was, that was clear. Um, long, extensive public review process and input. Um, so with that, I will uh, declare the public comment period closed. And, um, unless we have any additional public comments, which doesn't look like it.
No, there are no.
We have a city council, I'm sorry.
No, there are no additional.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, if we get any more, um, before the end of this, I guess we can, you know, obviously, we can entertain public comments. Um, you want to start? And we have, uh, Frank Ertaasen here represents the company. If people have technical questions, are they going to direct questions to the staff? You know, there's some issues raised and may need answered by, answers by, uh, city council members, but we'll start with Councilmember Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Open Shaw for the presentation. I, I think aesthetically, it's very consistent with, um, you know, the color scheme and color palette that our city has been, um, you know, using as of late. I really like the recommendations that the design review board made, especially as they relate to the trash enclosure. I really like that they have proposed putting two EVCs. Um, I, I get the sense that developers are starting to understand that we are big on reducing our carbon footprint in Imperial Beach and that we're also big on community input and, um, art, community art available in our community. So, um, I asked this question during staff briefing, but, um, I'd like to ask Mr. Erdi, and pardon me if I butcher your last name, Erdesam. Um, I know that there was a request to I know that there was a request to perhaps add windows to the circular structure and because of time constraints and wanting to stay within the timeframe to, you know, meet the deadline. That was impossible, but I just see an opportunity for putting some artwork perhaps on the exterior. I know that was proposed for the eastern side of the structure. But wondering if you'd be able to consider that on the round column as well. I think that would be consistent with some of the other buildings, newer buildings, such as grocery outlet, that's just, you know, across the street. And some of the future projects coming down the line further north. So wondering if that's something you'd like to consider? And what would be extremely really cool is aging the community in that as well.
Thank you, Mayor Didina, Councilmember Gary. You know, we're really proud of the project that we brought forward. We've been working with the, the community real closely for a number of years. Let me just say that March and Ash is a premier operator. And we're real proud to show the outlets that we have in San Diego and Imperial County. We, you know, we've put a lot of work into it. This is a very quality project. We're open to, to suggestions. I'd like to just, you know, mention, you know, we are late in the design phase. We're, we're ready to go into construction. And again, you know, we've worked really close. I think your staff would agree. Megan and Tyler and Andy, we've been working real closely with them on this design. If this is something that, you know, you, you want us to take a hard look at, we will. But again, just keep in mind that we have this, it's designed. We're ready to go to construction on it. So that, you know, that, I'll just leave it at that for now. While I, while I have the floor, if I could, I think that it's, there may be some misunderstanding on the monument side. That monument side is six foot, six inches wide by three foot tall. There's, you know, then I think there might be some misunderstanding on that part of it there. So I'll just leave it at that. I hope I've answered your question.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're referring to this particular moment, but I was talking about the circular, you know, part of the building, the column. And this wouldn't have, and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, but this obviously wouldn't impact the the architectural design and, and you know, would have nothing to do with construction. It's more for aesthetic purposes and the outside of that column, so it's not so bare. That could be done well down the line if you so choose. But I was just thinking that that, what a great opportunity to make this building consistent with some of the other buildings that we have on Palm Avenue while engaging the community. Not that you have not engaged the community. I think that has been made very clear. And you have done a good job doing that. Just a suggestion as an alternative to some of the recommendations that the Design and Review Board had regarding including windows in the structure, which that, for that, it would be too late, right, to meet the deadline, so.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that, Councilmember Gary. You're right, the Design Review Board asked us to consider a mural on the east side of the, of the building, which we're open to. If that, you know, we'd like to work with the community to make sure that this is something that the community would feel comfortable with. On that, on the front side, if you're asking us to consider a mural there, you know, we're really proud of this design. We think it's a beautiful project. We will, we're happy to engage in further conversation with you, but that's not something really we contemplated on that frontage of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments, Councilmember Gary? Are we done? Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, any questions or comments?
No questions, no comments, Mayor. Great-looking building. Very nice. That's all I have.
Great. Councilmember Fisher? Oh, he's, he's not here. Duh, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to rub it in. Mayor Protem Spriggs, questions, comments?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I am very proud of our Design Review Board for the thorough vetting and the discussion that they had with the developer and the fact that they were able to get a lot of very positive changes that are landscaping, et cetera, that are reflected in this, in this rendering we're looking at right now. I also have, as the longest-serving member on the council, I can tell you that what you said, Mr. Mayor, is absolutely correct. We have had long discussions regarding what to do with, many, many years ago, with respect to medical marijuana in Imperial Beach, and we developed a unique approach to that. And then as the state adopted recreational marijuana as legal in the state, we had lengthy discussions regarding the next steps in Imperial Beach and indeed agreed that we would have very strict criteria for location. Hence, with all those requirements, there's only one real location that was objected to by a lot of people, but who were interested in investing in this business in Imperial Beach, but we persisted. We also had very strict concerns regarding security and other arrangements for the building for standards for the kind of operators that would be considered. And I think we had probably one of the most comprehensive ordinances covering all of those aspects that, of any, of any city that I'm aware of. So I feel that the end was, including the vetting process, oh my gosh. That, that any, any, any businesses in this area would, would have to go through and that March and Ash did indeed go through. So I think what we're looking at here is the culmination of a lot of those efforts of that, of those strict standards that we set up and a design that looks very good and is going to be an improvement. And a location for this activity that is the one location that we have vetted repeatedly and included in our statutory requirements and spacing requirements and all of that, so. I'm, I'm very satisfied with the design, the vetting process, et cetera. We're really only approving the, the building and the considerations around the building at this point. But I would like to say that it would have been nice to have seen a nighttime rendering of the building in the presentation. And I would just, if we don't have it, I would just ask our, our staff with all respect for the great presentation Ms. Open Shaw that you made and for the work of our, our planners and community development staff. But when we have a commercial building or a mixed-use building that is going to be operating after dark, we need to see some of the night, the nighttime renderings as well as the daytime renderings. At least one slide that shows what it's going to look like after dark. And this picture doesn't show very clearly what, any, any lighting arrangements. They're very subtle if they are. But it would be nice to see what, what that is. And then that would address a number of the concerns community members may have regarding too much lighting, too little lighting, are they in the sweet spot? It also probably would have helped the Design Review Board address similar issues, and they are our delegated arm to, to look at all the design features, including that. The, the last thing I'd like to say is that we developed our, our ordinance very carefully around many, many comments that we had, that we received, including probably one of the most well-attended public workshops on the safety concerns regarding the, the intended use as a commercial marijuana dispensary and retail. And we indicated that before we would consider any additional dispensaries, and we only allow for one more in Imperial Beach, I'm not even sure where that would go. We would want to collect, we would want to have collected objective data regarding public health and safety impacts, if any, regarding this first dispensary, including but not limited to criminal activity, arrests, any changes in school behavior and discipline in terms of whether there's any impact on young people. And any number of factors that would go into an, an objective data-driven decision regarding how to evaluate the impact on the community of this, of this operation. I would just urge our staff, since we're at least a year away probably from this becoming operational, to use that time to refine and to develop and refine those indicators, those criteria, and how we're going to measure them, where we're going to get the data so that we have a baseline and to collect it before this starts operating, so that we have a baseline against which we can measure any impacts on the community, be they health or safety, whatever. And so that we, we don't have to argue philosophy anymore about this use. We can argue on facts and what the facts mean. So that's something I think will be very important for our, our city council in the future. And as well as to support the continued decision to move forward with this project, which could be very important for a large portion of Imperial Beach, almost two-thirds of which voted to legalize marijuana at the state level. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say I fully support the resolutions involved in approving the, the, the building and its design, and I think we should move forward.
Thanks, everyone. Before we move forward, there was one more comment. I did say that we could reopen the public hearing if we had additional comment. We've been trying to do that, been consistent throughout our whole virtual process. So with that, if you don't mind, I'd just like to open the public comment briefly for one comment that was emailed, I think. So I'd like to open the public hearing for one more comment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this comment was sent in by Edward Brackmannis. I'm not 100% sure that it's related to this item, and most of it cuts off, but what it says in the subject line is, "I did not see any information about the maintenance of the property. I see that this business will become another litter magnet." We cannot even, and, and then it cuts off there.
Great, okay, great. Well, thank you then. With that, I'd like to close the public hearing. And then at least for me, anytime we take one of the most lighted corners in Imperial Beach on both sides, now the building on the other side's empty and populated with a stunningly well-designed, aesthetically pleasing building that sort of adopts current design standards in terms of, you know, taking away that, that front area and that old abandoned parking used car lot that was there. I'm not sure how many decades. Frank may know that better than I do. Mr. Ratajkowski may know about how many decades that car lot was there, but anyway, I think for me, at least the ultimate outcome of this process, at least to where we're at now, would be, this would have been the best-case scenario in that we had a, a very, very extensive public review process with lots of citizen engagement. We had, you know, public hearings, public information meetings, a very clear legal process for approval of the use, and then a very clear process for approval of the building and at the highest standard. So I think this is a, an excellent sort of, I guess, verdict about the outcome in the sense that we've now got a really, really well-designed, actually beautiful building that will enhance the public safety of that area because what we don't want are abandoned buildings and empty lots and garbage-strewn areas that exist now where women walk and people walk, because I too walk in that area, so does my wife, and we go to CVS to ride our bikes. So very happy about this process and, and look forward to seeing this project move forward to completion. So with that, I would like to enter a motion.
Mayor, Mayor, can I, can I say one thing? Sorry, this is Director Foltz. I just wanted to clarify one thing, because earlier I mentioned that this is for the review of the building. I do want to note, since there's been discussion of signage, that this does also include approval of the signage for the building. So just to, to show what that signage is, we had that the wall sign that you saw on the rendering. And then there's two monument signs. It's, it's illuminated on both sides. And it's three feet tall and six feet wide. One's near Palm Avenue and one is near Delaware. So I just wanted to clarify that this approval also includes the signage as well.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm, just to be honest, the signage issue compared to some of the signs for beer on Palm Avenue and the dilapidated rundown signs that we've got all over from IB all the way to San Diego, it's I'm not sure why it's even an issue, but I do appreciate the discussion, but, you know, this compared to a lot of the older buildings that we have and liquor stores. And, you know, this, I think this is a step up in the right direction. So anyway, I would like to enter a motion, the City Council adopt Resolution 2021-22, approving the regular coastal permit, design review case, site plan review, administrative sign permit and categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines that involve demolish, demolish existing construct and construct a new, a new single-story 4,201 square-foot commercial building at 740 Palm Avenue, which is located in the CMU 1. Is there a motion?
Spriggs, I'll move.
Labor Gonzales, second.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Spriggs, second by Councilmember Labor Gonzalez to adopt Resolution 2021-22. Councilmember Aguirre, how do you vote?
Aguirre, aye.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Didina, how do you vote?
Didina, aye.
Motion carried by the following vote. Ayes, Aguirre, Labor Gonzalez, Spriggs, Didina, and Councilmember Fisher is disqualified.
Great. And now we have, I would like to enter a motion that the City Council adopt Resolution 2021-2023, confirming the time for completion of the project. Is there a motion?
Spriggs, I'll move.
Is there a second? I'll second.
Labor Gonzales, second.
Okay, I'll, W.C. Clark, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gonzalez, Labor Gonzalez.
Okay. There has been a motion by Mayor Protem Spriggs, second by Councilmember Labor Gonzalez to adopt Resolution 2021-23. Councilmember Aguirre, how do you vote?
Aguirre, aye.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Didina, how do you vote?
Didina, aye.
Motion carried by the following vote. Ayes, Aguirre, Labor Gonzalez, Spriggs, Didina, and Councilmember Fisher is disqualified.
Great, everyone. Now we need to wait for Councilmember Fisher to log back on. Maybe we'll make, I'll give him two minutes exactly to 6:30 on point. So I'm hoping he can get back on by 6:30.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'm back.
There you go, thank you. Mr. Hall texted me and thinking it was you. And I didn't realize it, so anyway, glad you're back. Item number two is RC Commercial Holdings LLC, Consideration of Regular Coastal Permit, Conditional Use Permit, Design Review Case, Site Plan Review Variance, Uncatagcalled Exemption Pursuant to Sequel Guidelines Section 15332, Class 32, for the construction of a new two-story commercial building with a roof deck at 951 Seacoast Drive. The hearing is open. And Associate Planner Open Shaw will give the The hearing is open and associate planner Open Shot will give the report.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, I'll be presenting on RC Commercial Holdings LLC project. Next slide, please. The project is proposing the demolition of the existing structure and construction of a new two story 6,709 square foot commercial building with roof deck at 951 Seacoast Drive. Next slide, please. Project is located in the CMU two zone, which is the Seacoast Commercial and Mixed Use Zone on a lot that is 4,760 square feet. Next slide, please. Here is an aerial view of the site. The cross streets are Seacoast Drive and Elder Avenue. Like these. Here are images of properties to the east. Next slide, please. Here are images of properties to the west. Next slide, please. Here are images of properties to the north. Next slide, please. And here are images of properties to the south. Next slide, please. Here's an image of the existing site from the corner of Elder and Seacoast Drive. Next slide, please. Here's an image of the existing site from the alley. Next slide, please. Here's a picture of the existing site from Seacoast Drive. Next slide, please. And this is an image of the project rendering. So the applicant held neighborhood meetings to assist them with the preparation of the design of the project. And through those neighborhood meetings, they received a lot of comments related to the height of the building. So the standard for height within the Seacoast Commercial and Mixed Use Zone is 30 feet. However, the applicant is actually proposing to have a lower height of 28 and a half feet for the building. So the way that the applicant proposes to accomplish that sort of reduction in the overall height is through 10% reduction in the first floor floor to ceiling height requirement. So generally, that requirement is 15 feet. However, they're requesting that 10% reduction to 13 and a half feet for the floor to ceiling height. So this is actually a provision that has historically been allowed within the vicinity. The specific project that I'm thinking of is the Brigantine. And essentially, what the applicant is doing though is they're proposing to have this reduction to provide the community basically with an overall lower building height. So as the applicant is proposing that 28 and a half tall building height with, even if they met that floor to ceiling height of 15 feet, it would just push the building to 30 feet in their overall height. So it's not to gain an exception, it's just to lower that height. So it would, yeah, essentially, it would just be to lower that overall building height. Now with that, though, there are portions of the building that exceed above the height limit that are allowed via exceptions pursuant to our code. So what our code allows for exceptions from for the building height for fire or parapet walls as required by law, as well as roof structures for the housing of elevators, stairways, tanks, ventilating fans, air conditioning equipment, or similar equipment related to maintain and operate the building. Now for this project, in particular, the parapet walls that are extending above the height to 32 feet, which is three and a half feet, are the wooden slats that you see along the western and northwestern and northern elevation of the building on the roof deck, as well as the cable railings located along the western elevation moving south and then across the southern elevation. Then additionally, there is the enclosed elevator enclosure as well as the staircase enclosure. Now, the applicant is proposing that they also incorporate the ADA restroom enclosures to be included with that building exception as it would be considered equipment that is required to maintain and operate the building. So they're proposing this to be incorporated with that because California state law has requirements related to providing adequate restrooms for a place that is promoting public congregation space. So the intent of this roof deck area is to be a space that promotes small events and other sort of similar events, such as like yoga classes or things of that nature, as well as private events potentially in the future. And so it's specifically going to be, and it's also going to be seating for the commercial tenant spaces. So the intent of it is specifically to promote public gatherings and congregations. Additionally, the applicant has stated that with COVID-19, there have been guidelines released by Cal OSHA, the CDC, the World Health Organization specifically related towards promoting hand sanitization as well as to promote that public and social distancing or distancing to alleviate the sort of impacts related to queuing from the restroom on the second floor as well as the ground floor, as well as to provide individuals that would congregate in a space for this specific type of commercial use access to the restrooms at that level. The applicant is proposing that those ADA restrooms be included as part of the exceptions for the requirement of maintaining and operating the building in a safe manner. Next slide, please. So here's the site plan slash ground floor plan. Pedestrian ingress and egress from the site is provided through a 21 foot wide entrance that is provides direct access off of Seacoast Drive. There's also an area is outdoor dining and seating area. This would be a patio open space. And there's three commercial tenants provided at the ground floor. Additionally, there's the trash enclosure, a unisex ADA restroom, electrical room, and then there is the elevator and stair enclosures that would be allowed access to the other portions of the building. So as you can see, the applicant is not providing any proposed parking for the project because the project is intended to enhance this pedestrian corridor and provide some active commercial uses. So what we have in our code sections is that it allows for off street offsite parking to be shared as long as the project site is within 1,000 feet of share or offsite of their offsite parking areas as well as the applicant incorporates transportation demand management strategies. So essentially, with this project designed to promote that active commercial use that really serves the tourist and local population, the applicant wasn't able to provide that a feasible method of the off street parking to accommodate this layout since they're providing those ground floor commercial tenant spaces. They're also accommodating the requirements related to restrooms, electrical areas or grease and sepsis, and so other equipment. And so to provide that sort of and accommodate that pedestrian circulation throughout the site, the applicant is proposing to utilize the off street parking. Now also, for there are two public parking lots available. So to the north, there is a public parking lot available. That's three feet away, 300 feet away. And then to the south, there's 170 feet away, another parking area. The transportation demand management strategies that the applicant is proposing to implement are lockable surfboard racks that you can see adjacent to that pedestrian and pedestrian entrance. And then also there is bicycle parking provided. The applicant would provide transport, public transportation passes to all of their employees. And then also throughout the site, there would be wayfinding signage provided with directions to be able to point members of the public in the direction of available public parking areas as well as public transportation areas. Next slide, please. Here is the second floor plan. The second floor has a fireplace with a private dining area. There's open and outdoor dining, a U shaped bar, another commercial tenant space and an office where the onset management will locate. Next slide, please. Now here is an image of the roof deck. It should be noted that the roof deck space has open dining seating available, and it would also potentially be utilized for small gathering or events. As I mentioned earlier, something similar to maybe yoga class or similar events with a similar related level impact. And then also, if you look to the north and you see the roof area, that area is actually going to be utilized for mechanical equipment. Next slide, please. And here is an image of the roof plan. Next slide, please. Here are images of the landscape plan. It has the first, the ground floor, second floor, roof deck, and then a colored site plan. Next slide, please. So for landscaping, 15% of the site is required to be landscaped, which would be 714 square feet. The applicant is proposing to have a combination of both planted landscaping as well as permeable pavers to meet that requirement. So at grade, there's 419 square feet of planted landscaping. And throughout the rest of the site, you'll see there's 270 square feet of planted landscaping. And then also on the ground floor, there's 1,780 square feet of permeable pavers available. Just as a note, the planted landscaping for the 419 square feet provided at grade, while there are portions of landscaping that extend into the right of way, those are not included in the landscape calculations overall. Next slide, please. This is an image of the landscape materials board. Next slide, please. Here's an image of the northern elevation. Next slide, please. Here's an image of the western elevation. Next slide, please. This is an image of the eastern elevation. Next slide, please. Here's an image of the southern elevation. Next slide, please. Here's an image of the building sections. This is where you would see the 13 foot six inch floor to ceiling height on the ground floor. Next slide, please. Here are images of the building materials board. The applicant is proposing to use a variety of different materials and colors for the project. Next slide, please. Here's another image for the building materials proposed to use. So there's an example of cable railing as well as some of the storefronts. Next slide, please. Here is additional materials. So there's the security gate as well as the security grill, the trash enclosure and glass garage door. Next slide, please. Here is a project rendering of the site. Next slide, please. So an additional rendering more from an elevated view. Next slide, please. Here is a rendering from the corner of Seacoast and Elder. Next slide, please. Here is an additional rendering. Next slide, please. Here's an image where you see the alley view as well. Next slide, please. Here is an image of the southern elevation. Just a quick note on this, one of the items that came up was the mural that's proposed on this elevation. So the applicant is proposing to have community input being basically utilizing community input to determine what the actual mural would be. So the octopus isn't set in stone at this time. One of the other items that came up was the potential.
Wait, I want to make sure. Are people are they opposed to octopuses? Are they not representative of the city? I just want to make sure I'm clear what the nature of the comment was.
Yeah, so we received comments basically asking if this is the final mural. And not everybody was the biggest fan of the octopus. There were some people who really liked it, but it was kind of one of those items that people had inquired about. And so, yeah, as in response, they're they're open to soliciting community feedback and having the community participate in determining what would actually be on this.
I just thought maybe after I my octopus teacher on Netflix that there was an anti octopus league that I didn't know about, but great, thanks.
Um. So one of the other items that did come up was the potential of incorporating a living green wall on this elevation. If that was determined to be the what was wanted on this elevation, it should be noted that the landscape architect would still need to look into the feasibility of having a green wall there. And that's something that can be done, but it's just something that would need to be assessed. So next slide, please. Here is a project rendering of the site from Seacoast Drive in the park. Next slide, please. So the design review board recommended approval of the project's design with a number of recommendations. Most of those recommendations were incorporated into the plans as well as language in the resolution. However, there are a couple of recommendations that we should discuss, one of which is to incorporate more sightline mitigation with see through materials at the north end of the building on the roof. So if you can go to the next slide, we can kind of dig into that a little bit. Thank you. So for this northern elevation, there is the utilization for these parapets as vertical wooden slats. So at this time, they are proposed with a two inch space in between each individual slot. So the applicant has because there's mechanical equipment there, the intent of maintaining the posing to maintain vertical slats as opposed to utilizing cable railing, which is shown on the other elevations of the building, if you look more search to the west into the southern elevation for the roof deck is because the applicant states that there are mechanical equipment that they believe would be better adequately screened, which would help maintain the aesthetic of the building through utilizing these wooden vertical slats for this. However, the applicant did state that they could potentially increase that gap in between the individual slats from two inches to four inches. So if we, however, that would make the mechanical equipment more visible. So if we can go back to that previous slide, we can go over the other item. Thank you. So the other recommendation was for the conditional use permit should specify that restroom should be provided for increased accessibility and available for users of the building. It should be noted that the restrooms related language specific to the restrooms have been included in the resolution. And it would be specific to to this specific type of use. Next slide, please. This is the project rendering. Next slide, please. Here is an image of the existing site as well as an image of the proposed site. Next slide, please. And the recommendation is to adopt resolution 2021 dash 21. And as a quick note, resolution 2021 dash 21 was submitted as last minute information. But that resolution would be approving the project. Other options, the council can approve the project with modifications, disapprove the project or continue to continue the project to a future public hearing. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Before we continue, I'd like to make sure I get a sense of how many public comments we have. We have, we have over a dozen written comments so far, and we I haven't got a sense of the number of hands raised. So maybe I should be able to see that, but the city clerk could let us know that so we can determine whether or not, you know, we have 100 people that want to speak. Obviously, three minutes.
Well, can I ask any members of the public that are joining us by Zoom if they would like to comment on this particular project to use the raise hand feature or the star nine on their phone? As of now, I don't see any raised hands, but we do. Yeah. But we do have several written comments that came in by email.
Yeah, we have, we have 13. As I understand, we have 13 written comments. No hand. So we have one hand raised. Is that all?
I do have a hand raised.
That's correct.
I don't know if it's showing.
Okay, well, let's let's continue. I mean, if for some reason, I'll suddenly get 100 hands, I just gets to the point whether or not everybody speaks for three minutes or, you know, if we have 100 people in two minutes. So let's just make sure we're clear on if, you know, a lot of people join or if it's just limited to one and then the written comments. To make sure. Okay, so Deputy Clerk Cabayo, you want to go ahead with the the written comments or the public comment, the raised hand and then the written comments?
Well, the raised hand belongs to Flavia Vares, who is with the development team. So I think we'll read the public comments first that came in by email.
Sounds good. Okay.
Okay. The first one is from Leslie McCollum. And it says to the city council and Mayor Dina, one height limit, the elevator is 41 feet. Why are height limits set if they are routinely waived? On the alley, we will be looking at 32 foot wall, including a three and a half foot wooden parapet. My understanding is that the applicant is unwilling to do open cable railing or Plexiglas on the alley to open up the view due to having to store equipment. At the very least, I urge the spacing of the wooden slats to four inches from two inches, as has been discussed and is allowed by code. Number two, adverse impacts on residents. My husband and I are devastated that we will be losing the beautiful view from both inside and out, and we have enjoyed for 18 years. As will so many residents up and down the alley. The goal of the project is to attract tourists and reap profits. It serves no real benefit to residents of the community, especially the ones who will be adversely impacted by total loss of view, noise, crowds, smoke, et cetera. The project is surrounded on all sides by residents except for the street, despite the zoning. Locals tend to avoid the places frequented by tourists. Three, no setback from alley. The setback from the alley is only 16 inches. On Elder Avenue, the report mentions setbacks to protect street and public views toward the ocean, but no such courtesy was extended to all the people who are losing views along the alley. The alley view is not open. A few more feet could make a huge difference for all of the people up and down the alley and those with rooftop decks who are losing their views. Why not a further setback in some landscaping or parking? I believe trash trucks and emergency vehicles, as well as the huge delivery trucks that come in to deliver the market to Market Store half a block away will have trouble coming in and out of the alley. to Market Store half a block away will have trouble coming in and out of the alley. It is the busiest alley in town. People going to the market to Market Store routinely leave their cars in the alley. Number four, no parking at all. Not one single parking place is allotted for this project, not even a few in the alley. Some of the residents in my building already park three blocks from home. Where are all the people who come to the anticipated rooftop events and food court supposed to park? The city needs to figure out what they envision the future of IB to be. If by classic Southern California, you mean like the rest of Southern California, crowded, overpriced and full of tourists, we are there. We are surrounded by Airbnbs. Look at one hundred Evergreen. Hardly anyone lives there. Where we used to have neighbors, places sit empty or are occupied occasionally by loud tourists. The sense of community is long gone and IB is becoming more crowded, densely developed and expensive with each passing date. It is becoming everything people escaped other beach towns to avoid. With some scaled down modifications. I'm sorry, we're out of time for that one. The next public comment that I have is from Sandra Brillhart. She says, I support this project and respectfully ask council to approve it. There are many positive aspects of this project, starting with the owner's courtesy of soliciting comments from the public at an informal socially distanced workshop on Pier Plaza. The owners were genuinely interested in the participants' viewpoints and incorporated a lot of our suggestions in the proposed design. The open air casual atmosphere that is being proposed is attractive and will extend the active retail area of Seacoast Drive further south, adding to the vibrancy and eclectic vibe of Seacoast Drive. Although the project is not required to provide parking, the applicant has attempted to mitigate the need for parking by incorporating TDM strategies. I would, however, suggest that the city consider updating its twenty twelve parking study to ensure that future development on Seacoast can meet the parking needs of residents, visitors and employees. In the meantime, this is this is an outstanding project that should be approved. The next email is from Winn Hescola. It reads, I fully support the proposed project at nine fifty-one Seacoast Drive on the council agenda this week. As designed, it will be a very positive addition to the city and the Seacoast community. Thank you. The next email is from Beth Stoffer. It says, I'm a resident of Imperial Beach and I wanted to voice my support for the project at nine fifty-one Seacoast Drive. I think it will look beautiful when completed, and this is an older building that really should be updated. I'm happy this project will bring even more beauty and more business to Imperial Beach. The next email is from Deborah Ridge. And it says, I would like this read aloud at the meeting. The construction of view blocking structures to house tanks, et cetera, is an unnecessary exception to a rule. It is an insult to those of us behind the new building. Our daily lives will be negatively impacted by this view blocking structure and also by the lack of parking provided. I do agree they should at least incorporate more sightline mitigation with see-through materials. Fellow neighbors who love IB are the ones being hurt by this overbuilding. Please remember the little guys behind you. The next comment is from Robert Miller. It says, Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I am in favor of the city council giving approval for the proposed project located at nine fifty-one Seacoast Drive. I believe the design to be exceptional. Thank you. The next comment is from Ruth Cole. And it says, I would like to comment on the project going in at nine fifty-one Seacoast. It is an attractive development using a number of different materials and setbacks to relieve the monotony we find in many of the new developments along Seacoast and throughout the neighborhoods. I support the project. The next comment is from Michael Carey. It says, this email is in support of the proposed project at nine fifty-one Seacoast Drive. There are many things that I like about this project. The owner and architect met with members of the community several times. They listened to feedback and incorporated it into the project. The project is one hundred percent commercial with options for different types of uses, which is just what we need for that location. Its design is very creative and open both visually and physically to the beach community it will serve. The one issue is the height of the rooftop bathroom elevator structure. It makes sense to have bathrooms at the roof deck level, but probably should be done with the CUP to not set precedent without specifics of a particular project. Also, I would support a handicap parking space or two on Seacoast or the side street. Again, I enthusiastically support this project. It would be great for that location. Thank you. The next comment is from Deborah Carey. It says, Dear city council members, I'm writing to strongly support the proposed project at nine fifty-one Seacoast Drive that is coming before the council tonight. I appreciate that the builders took the time to receive input from community members about the design of this all-commercial project. It is both attractive and compatible with our small-town aesthetic. I believe it will benefit IB residents and visitors alike. Please approve this project. The next comment is from Stephen Alpinari. It says, Dear Miss Openshaw, a few years ago, when we built our houses after planning to prove them, neighbors raised concerns which we compromised on. We considered our neighbors in regard not blocking the view of the ocean from the roof. Now we are all, now we all are looking for the same neighbor consideration to not block just with a building but with unnecessary walls and equipment. Further, we are concerned that in the near future, they will continue to add more things to accommodate events and block views without considering our community. I really think our neighborhood will be improved by this, but just want some assurance that this does not quickly turn into a full-fledged third floor. As a note, several restaurants in other parts of San Diego have rooftop decks without restrooms and are five-star establishments. I really don't see the need to have a restroom on the rooftop deck other than to ultimately achieve the enclosed third floor. With modern elevators accessing a lower-floor restroom timely, having the restrooms there should really not impose any issue. Please consider keeping IB as a neighborly community. We are looking forward to the new restaurant or business to move in. We always look for positive changes in our community. Thanks. The next comment is from Gary Losi. It says, I am the owner of the property directly behind nine fifty-one Seacoast Drive at one ten to one sixteen Elder Avenue. Since the project is being built on the zero lot between our two properties, I have strong concerns about the rooftop deck and its use. Hours of use, excessive noise, no music, no events, no parties, trash, security. The roof deck hours need to be restricted to ten AM to nine PM. No music should be allowed on the rooftop deck at any time. The proposed gate access to the rooftop deck is directly next to the front entrance to my property. Regular security needs to ensure no loitering, no smoking in or around this critical area. Delivery vehicle shall not block our alley parking lot at any time. Trash being wind-blown off the deck, dropped or thrown back down to my property is of great concern. Sincerely, Gary Losi. The next comment is from Jack Losi. It says, Hello, I would like to comment on this project during the city council meeting. I'm a resident of Imperial Beach and a property owner in IB for over thirty years. I am part of the ownership group of the property directly east of the subject. The roof deck is a very big concern. The owner plans to have guests on the roof for parties, weddings, musical events, et cetera, with the availability of alcohol. This will create an enormous amount of noise and disturbance for the residents of our property. The roof deck needs to restrict hours of use and have third-party security checking guests at the entrance at all hours of operation. Guests should not be able to gather outside on the sidewalk and impede ingress egress to our property to the east. If you look at the southeast facade rendering, you can see that the staircase entrance is about three feet from the entrance to our property to the east. This will create noise and disturbance for our tenants. I suggest the staircase to the roof be positioned opposite of the current location, so the staircase entrance will open facing west towards Seacoast, not east down Elder Avenue. Guests will then line up on Seacoast to enter, not Elder Avenue. This will mitigate guests from loitering in front of our property, smoking, littering and creating noise. Please let me know how the applicant will mitigate these concerns. I can be reached at this email address. And it looks like the final comment is from Kimberly Roth. It says, My name is Kimberly Roth and I'm one of the owners of one ten to one sixteen Elder Avenue. I have concerns about the roof deck and an already excessively tall building. There should be no temporary items allowed on the roof deck that would extend the building height even higher, such as umbrellas, sailovers, patio covers and lighting posts. These temporary items might be used as a way to get around the height limits. Additionally, light fixtures on the roof deck should be no higher than two feet above floor level. And it looks like that's all I have for public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Public comment period is now closed. This is Mayor De Dina. And we will go to city council comments and we can start in the reverse order now. Mayor, approach him, Spriggs.
Yep, thanks. I'm here. I do have a number of of comments and questions. I'd like to have the start us all off by having the owner's representative of the of the project. Talk a little bit about the concerns that have been expressed. And and address them if possible or indicate why they haven't been addressed. Before I go into any specific questions, I think it'd be helpful to hear from the owner.
And you're including that in that process, Mr. Spriggs, that there was a three-hour design review meeting where there a number of conditions. Matt, is that correct?
Oh, yes. And I think I think that the design review process was very thorough here as well and and also the engagement of community members, as mentioned by several of the commentators on several occasions to get their viewpoints. And no doubt, I would assume that the viewpoints of some of those who have concerns about the project in the immediate vicinity and adjacent to the property, that those concerns were heard on that occasion as well. Unfortunately, we don't, we aren't witnesses to the discussion at the design review board or in those community meetings. So I just thought a very quick review by the owners would help us all get on record that these things have been discussed and addressed and what might be addressed in the future, if anything.
Okay, just make sure we're all clear on that.
Yeah.
May I jump in?
Then I have some questions after that.
Go ahead, Flavia.
Thank you, everyone. So Mayor De Dina, council members, city staff, other attendees. My name is Flavia Vares. I've been a resident of Imperial Beach for the last nine years and currently do reside here. I'm the real estate broker who helped ownership acquire this site originally. I'm also going to be serving as the leasing agent to help obtain tenants for the project. I'm also the attorney for this development project. In attendance as well with me today are two members of the ownership team and two of the architects from PGAL, which was the firm that designed the project. We are all here tonight to answer questions and be responsive to not only the questions that have been asked, but any additional questions that the council would like to ask us. But really beyond being here just to answer questions, I just wanted to preface all of our replies and comments by thanking the neighborhood and all of the community of IB that did come out to our neighborhood focus groups. We received excellent feedback. We received a lot of different ideas and opinions on the direction that a project like this can take. A lot of it was very motivating and inspiring. And the ownership just wanted to express gratitude for all of that time that was invested by the community members who took part in all of that and really helped us to steer the use and the nature of this project into a building that has the potential to truly become an iconic part of Imperial Beach. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And if I might, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to ask Flavia and the design and the owner team if if any of them need to weigh in as well. Some of the issues that were expressed regarding the roof deck. And I would say that probably most of the concerns were about the roof deck and how it will be operated, the hours of operation, noise, smoking, access, that sort of thing. Some concerns, of course, are just that the thing is going to be there at all. The building is going to be there at all and will raise raise issues regarding views and that sort of thing. But I think the roof deck is is the area where it would be most useful to hear what you have to say about the expectations regarding operations, hours, noise and that sort of thing.
Absolutely. I can jump in on that. The the rooftop deck, the intent of the use is to be not only a community enhancing use, because I we do think that IB needs more spaces that can be rented or licensed for community uses such as, you know, the Suncoast Co-op Market when they have their food tastings or presentations. There are fitness and yoga instructors that would love to have a space like this where they can, you know, have their business in the mornings on some weekdays or weekends. And also different kinds of small gatherings and events, retirement parties, small weddings. It's not a huge space, so this isn't going to turn into ever a nightclub or anything that is out of control or the things that maybe some of the neighbors were fearing. And that's because ownership is also going to keep a very tight control over the kinds of events, the kinds of vendors that are allowed and the sorts of uses that will be made of that third floor area. Another thing to mention is, you know, obviously, nobody in the neighborhood really wants the alternative to something like this, which would be what everyone else seems to be doing. Big giant boxy structure that maximizes the building square footage you can build and is pretty much condos above maybe a small retail space. And then, of course, not even a very large retail space, because most of the downstairs would be parking for the condos. And then most of those condos would have rooftop decks would probably be Airbnbs or, you know, whatever use would be used as residential use. And you would also have rooftop gatherings with the people who live in the condos or who rent the Airbnbs, which could also maybe create that that activity, noise or conversations or lightly playing music that some of the neighbors are fearing. We are very amenable to hours of operation, something that would be in line with the other retail and commercial uses in the neighborhood, something that is compatible with the neighborhood's current uses. It will absolutely be a no-smoking building. So for everyone that brought up smoke as an issue, that will not be an issue at this building, because it will be a non-smoking building. The gates will all be closed at night. This is not a building where there will be, you know, late into the night activity. That's not the plan for it at all. The hours of operation will be very similar to what you'll see down the street at the Brigantine or other fine dining establishments in the area. The rooftop deck does have the restrooms. That's a very important function for the building for several reasons. Especially because in recent times, World Health Organization and pretty much every federal agency as well as state agency has recommended that hand washing, sanitation and and also, you know, being able to access places like a restroom without having to touch elevator buttons and banisters on stairwells and and spread potential viruses or bacteria all over a building. It's going to be very beneficial to users of the building. In fact, we're not sure really that a third floor area could function for something like a community event like a yoga class if we're not able to provide a place where people can use the restroom and wash their hands, you know, before and after that kind of activity. Is with respect to the north area, that would be the parapet that you see with the wooden slats. That is provided. I mean, that screening is actually provided for the benefit of neighbors, because we don't think anyone that's a pedestrian walking by or anybody that lives nearby should have the the visual site of equipment on a rooftop. Most commercial buildings of this nature have several kinds of equipment on the roof and we want to screen that as best as possible to keep the aesthetic of the building as beautiful as possible. We do understand that there are a lot of people with concerns over loss or impact to their views. One of the things that we did to design this building as opposed to a building where a big boxy building that we could have probably designed and built as of right without any necessary City Council review or discretionary review process. When you build a building by right, it means you can skip all of the approvals and just build something that fits the current code. Without the need for any variances or exceptions. Well, that boxy building would probably block a lot more than what we've managed to accomplish because of the skill of PGAL, which is a fantastic architecture firm. I think anyone who sees this can agree that when when ownership and the neighbors told PGAL, we want something airy. We want something with light and something that is pulled back on, you know, the second floor and that gives visual interest. And covers the views for everybody as little as possible, including the view into the alley. You see there on the screen, the pedestrian walking the dog. If that pedestrian was to look over his or her left shoulder. She'd actually be able to see into the alley through the two windows at that corner. And I mean, all of these were very thoughtfully provided aspects to the design so that we could maximize. The view that people would retain. And I I know especially in the blue building to the north. When that building went up, I'm sure that the developer, the ownership got the same probably. Questions and concerns from the people to the east of that blue building, but. You know, in California, we do not have negative easements, which means there are no easements or implied protectable rights. For view, light or air by law. But despite that, we are very trying to be as respectful as possible about views and all of that was factored into this design. Which is probably completely the opposite from a big boxy building that you see in so many other places that are really trying to maximize your square footage. I hope that adequately addresses the the third floor, but I'm happy to answer further questions or have the architecture team weigh in as well.
Yeah, I I have I have just a couple more comments and or questions. I'm. I think you're right about the design of the building. I think it's a very. It's a very nice design for our community. And the idea that it is a retail building as opposed to the typical sell the condos and leave and tiny or relatively small retail space. Is excellent for Imperial Beach. So the the there are a couple of questions relating to that. First, I'm glad you're the leasing agent, Flavia. The. There are several potential different owners of different small retail operations there, or it could be one. One. Retailer that operates the different spaces. What's? What's your and the owner's vision for what kind of retail is going to go in there? Is it going to be, are you looking for multiple small retailers? Or are you looking for a larger? Perhaps better resourced retailer that can keep the place occupied? The concern is, of course, that we want, we don't want. Vacant retail space on Seacoast Drive if it's all avoidable. We like the idea of it being an active pedestrian oriented. Streetscape is what's in our zoning and that means that, you know, whatever retail goes in. Needs to be thoughtful and needs to be sustainable. So what what are your responses to to that thought and that question?
Mayor Protem Spriggs, we share that goal, first of all, for zero vacancy. That's probably an obvious goal for any landlord or property owner or property manager, but we absolutely share that goal. When you ask whether the intent is to have one. A single tenant building operator that would lease the entire building and then. Operate different businesses within the building, that is one possibility. There are not many companies that. You know, specialize in that type of use, but there are some out there. And that is one potential way that we can lease out the building. The other would be to have a centralized property management and to lease out the individual units to different tenants. One thing that the staff didn't dwell on or really point out is that. The floor layout for the different floors. It is possible to break it out into additional spaces or even to combine some of the spaces. So we can change. The number of tenants in the building to accommodate potential uses or potential tenants that either want to combine a space. Or break it up a little bit further and take a smaller space. There's not a lot of flexibility there, but there is some flexibility in how we can allocate. The rentable, you know, the leasable premises within the building. Right now, we envision that the most likely makeup of uses would be. Dining on the first level that you see there. On the furthest south unit, which is the one with some blue tile in front of it on the corner there to the right on the screen. Something like coffee shop, donut shop. Ice cream potentially, although we already have ice cream shop in the vicinity and we really don't want to cannibalize any of the existing. Businesses that are in the area, so we're going to be very thoughtful in how we approach that. And again, when when you said some developers come in, build a bunch of condos and take off. Ownership here is pretty much the opposite of that. This is going to be a very hands on. Ownership team going to be looking at into the future as a way to build this location. As a very vibrant and, you know, financially viable part of the community where businesses thrive and do well there. We're also hearing from a lot of neighbors. Again, the neighborhood focus groups were extremely useful to ownership, because. They were even telling us the kinds of cuisine that they feel is missing in Imperial Beach and different types. Of food vendors and even different price points as things, you know, to fill. Some gaps that we have in what's available right now for residents to walk to a restaurant and get a bite to eat. We've heard that something fresh and healthy like Mediterranean or salads is missing in the community right now. We've also heard that an additional coffee shop on this end of the beach area would be a great addition. And even something like a wine shop with, you know, cheeses, maybe a bakery. Would go in really well where you see the pedestrian walking the dog on the north side of the project. Upstairs in the second floor. We envision that being either one or two restaurant operators. More than likely, one restaurant bar operator there on that the side with the stairwells, that would be the south side of the second floor. And that would might be something comparable to a Brigantine. But maybe a different type of cuisine, you know, that we have a lot, a great mix currently. I think Imperial Beach has developed a really just great. Flavor and and diversity in the kinds of foods, but there's room for more, and that's what we're really going to be going for. We're going to be. Making sure that all of the tenants are absolutely first class. That they have a tenant improvement budget to make and keep the place looking amazing. And that we're going to make sure that the building is operated in a way that reflects well of Imperial Beach and all of us residents here.
The third floor is mostly going to be walk up, you know, for for dining unless it's been reserved for some other use, I suppose.
More than likely, and that really is going to be a conversation with what who will be the second floor tenant. Whether or not the second floor tenant will reserve that area as part of their dining, and it would be fantastic for all of us residents to be able to go and dine on that third. Floor. It may also during earlier in the day hours, like mornings, be an ideal location. To lease out to somebody that wanted to start yoga workouts or something of that nature. We will keep, you know, constraints on noise. Obviously, on trash and litter, just like we will for the rest of the building. We want to keep this building looking amazing and first class. And so that third floor and it could be very useful for things like retirement ceremonies. We have a lot of military in the community. I myself am a military spouse, and so. I'm aware personally of how many of us in that community are looking for. Small spaces where we can have those kinds of ceremonies and gatherings with family and friends, birthday parties, small weddings. It's not a huge space. You're never going to have a giant dance floor, you know, crazy loud music into the night. That's not the kind of event that we envision. In a space that size.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for those very complete responses and and descriptions. I know my colleagues will have other questions. The last thing I'd like to. Do, Mr. Mayor, is a is a comment. Several people made comments about parking. Considering that there's not going to be any additive parking created by this this development. For good reason stated, by the way, because there's only so much you can do on a lot this size if it's going to be all commercial. One person even mentioned the need to update the 2012 parking study. I really, I think we're getting to the point where the in this this development, which I I support. And don't think we should hold it up to deal with issues like parking, etc. At all, even though we are voting to approve it without it. Without parking. But this this building. Really, really brings home the question. Of what are we going to do about parking in Imperial Beach? Because if it's and and we can't just look at this building one off, you know, the the staff report for all of its. Its completeness. Takes the parking issue as though this is the only building and the and and that there's, you know, parking available in parking lots to the north and south. Well, during our six or seven month high season, if this. Operation, this building is successful with its retail. And you add that to Hess and you add that to Cornell Brewery and you add that to Brigantine and to every other retailer along Seacoast Drive. You can see that there is going to be a a conflict. A real excess of parking demand over supply. Imperial Beach is a destination. And it's a visitor serving community, so we have to be able to.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, just for the record, that's to make sure I get uncomfortable when we start deviating, you know, this is a development project we're reviewing and then now we have a discussion about. Parking in Imperial Beach overall, so. Saying that I. I know the city, if you're ready, may if we were in person, may comment on, you know, are we getting off track to talk about overall parking? You know, obviously, parking is an issue, but let me make sure that we focus on the project rather than. A parking manager plan for Imperial Beach. So I'm assuming it's fine, but I'm just going to put that on the record.
That's fine to put it on the record, but I don't appreciate being interrupted when I'm coming to a conclusion.
Well, I think it's my obligation as.
It's not your obligation.
On topic and not, we don't get sidetracked with having a public hearing on another issue rather than the issue at hand. So I I'm perfectly comfortable saying that.
Okay, fine. The public has raised the issue. The issue's been raised in the D R in the design review board. And the issue is right before us, because we're doing. A conditional use permit to waive any parking, which would otherwise be required without that. So it's relevant. Now, I'm just saying that in the context of Imperial Beach. We eventually are going to have to look at a more wholesale solution to parking and not a project by project. Review like what we're doing here. All that I'm saying is if you combine. A successful Seacoast Drive. That's successful for the businesses where people can get to them. And successful for the visitors to the beach and successful for the residents who are also competing for the same parking spaces. We have to do something different than what we're doing now and what we've been doing since 2012, the last parking study. We need a new parking study and we need some solutions and alternatives that involve the port, the private sector, etc. Or else we're going to run into a situation where. None of our businesses are going to be successful, because people can't come to Imperial Beach to go to them. Our residents are going to be very angry. They are our voters. If there's no solution that we really forthrightly seek on this issue. And visitors to the beach aren't going to be able to park either. So we've got. Multiple challenges that we're going to have to deal with, and this project just. Reflects the fact that we've got to deal with these issues. And that doesn't mean we don't approve the project, but the project is a harbinger of things to come. And we need to be responsible as city council members and city leaders. To not keep going on project after project, looking at it as though we've got blinders on and we're not aware of the surrounding impacts. Of the project when it comes to parking and traffic and the impact on other businesses and our tax revenues ultimately if businesses can't succeed here, because people can't get to them. So this. I'll conclude by saying we I support this project. I think we should approve it. But I really believe that the suggestion that we update our parking study. And that it'd be very thorough and include all the potential partners we could have in solving this problem. Needs to proceed and I urge city staff to scope that out and let's get started with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Protem Spriggs, Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, I was saying, Mr. Mayor, I hope you allow me, you know, when I was on, when I was recluse from the last topic, I got an email from our good friend. Tim O'Neill letting me know that his father had passed away, Bob O'Neill, and what a pillar of the community he was. He served as appropriate field league president for over 10 years and. Was well rooted and well founded as a leader and.
Wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry, Jack. Can you repeat that? What happened?
Yeah, Tim O'Neill's father passed away.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
And and you know, I I just, again, I know this isn't on this agenda item, but. You know, as we go forth with our parks and recreation programming, I think we need a like almost like a walk of fame like we have over in Veterans Park, maybe at the sports. Park for all the good people and mentors in our community that we've lost. I know Captain Bill we lost and. So I just, I just wanted to mention that because Greg Banks-Martin is a good friend of our city. And I'd be lost a good one. So, you know, I I'll have to agree with Mayor Protem Spriggs that parking is going to be a huge issue. Once again, and I'd like to have the opportunity as a council to. Sit down and to have a discussion with this and in an upcoming meeting. As far as this design goes. Wow, if you took a before and after the. No, no comparison. The after is absolutely fantastic. You know, I looked at Seacoast, it's it's just lining up with a couple of projects that we have ongoing. What a great place it's going to be, beautifying the city. I do like the the airiness and outdoorness of this project. I do do share concerns, you know, if you have dining establishments, the staffing. Will be taking up quite a few parking. And I know that they've talked about having some opportunities for employees in a building to to hop on public transport on this. On the company dime, which I think is great, but I also think it's something that should be highly encouraged, if not pushed. Firmly towards the employees. It does take few, quite a few people to operate these types of establishments. I'm I'm so pleased that. The ownership did reach out to the community. They listened to them. They heard their thoughts and voices. And I know you can't please everybody, but I think they've done a fabulous job in their design. And the fact that they've also taken the design review board's comments into. Into consideration and done what's been asked of them. And again, you know, I will, oh, I'm surprised that Mayor Protem Spriggs didn't mention this, but lighting. You know, again, I think that as buildings go in on Seacoast, the opportunity to improve the lighting. That's existing is a huge benefit for our community, not only for businesses. So. I can't read plans very well, so I hope that there is lighting in the plans and. I'm not sure if it's a requirement, but it would sure be nice. Some of these projects that we have. To have a night and day ring of the renderings just to see where the lighting ends up. So but again, thanks to the the owners and the representatives here here on this. This meeting with us for doing what they've done, and I look forward to this project going forward.
Great, thank you. And thanks for bringing up the issue of Tim's dad. It's Tim's dad, right? You said, yeah, thanks. And. Councilmember, leave a good thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. Very great looking building, great presentation. Moving forward. Like Councilman Fisher stated. For what's there now and the rendering, it's definitely an improvement to Seacoast. Thank you very much.
Great. Councilmember Gary.
Thank you. Yes, I want to congratulate. Flavia for a great presentation and very thoughtful answers to the questions. And I also want to commend the owners and developers for the extensive outreach that they have done with the community. I think it's an absolutely gorgeous building. I very much appreciate the. Mid century modern boho aesthetic of it. I think it meshes very well.
Is that a, can we call you, is that a hashtag?
I don't know if I'm saying the right terms, but that's kind of what.
I was going to do Aussie, Latin America, retro, Latin American, Hawaiian, Waikiki. Vibe, but you know, whatever.
It's very beautiful and I I really appreciate the openness to feedback. And suggestions and even criticism. I think that, you know, I for one appreciate that when, you know, developers come before us. I also really think that you guys did a really good job in thinking about the types of businesses that will come in. thinking about the types of businesses that will come in to the property itself. I I do want to say that I'm I'm sympathetic and cognizant about the loss of view. You know, I think that for some of these empty buildings that have been there for a long time, you know, we were on borrowed time, right? We knew that there's the possibility of those buildings going up and the fact that they made accommodations to somehow give some sort of view for the folks that would be losing that is something positive. So, that being said, I do think that whenever we are discussing a project on our major business corridors such as Seacoast, it does merit a discussion about parking. Perhaps not in as in depth as, you know, we may want to or need to. So perhaps we should discuss that as an agenda item in a future council meeting because I do know that that's a concern for our community and 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 I think that it it merits for us to start thinking outside the box because yes, we do have a couple of of parking lots closely available. I'm a huge advocate of public transit. As you all know, I'm always talking about that and I appreciate that the developer has thought about that and has encouraged their employees to take public transit, but you know, I I have other ideas of how we could start to address head on the issue of parking in the area, but we'll wait for a different meeting for that. My question for Flavia is if you all have an estimate of how many jobs these new businesses or tenant businesses would bring to Imperial Beach?
Sure. As far as jobs, I guess we could break that down into two phases. One would be the construction phase because that would be one part of what's about to happen. And I think the estimates are somewhere between 50 to 100 different people will be working in some capacity on the project during the design and construction phase. And then once it is fully operational and built out, you'd imagine that each of the tenants is going to have their own employees that will be the tenants' employees, but will be working as servers, bussers, there's going to be janitorial. There will more than likely be also bartenders on the second floor where there is a small bar area in the restaurant space. As well as all of the usual management that goes into a building of this nature. There will be, of course, bookkeeping and all of the things that go into the the business world. So there will be quite a few more jobs. Currently, the building is vacant and has been for some time and was previously just a residential home. And so, yes, I can say with certainty, there will be many more jobs at this location than there have been in decades.
That is fantastic to hear. What I would, I know that we can't ask you all to ask to hire local, but to encourage that the owners make an effort in in within the the law to recruit workers from Imperial Beach, especially now that we're coming out of COVID. I'm sure there's a lot of folks that have been left unemployed that would very much appreciate the opportunity to not just get a job, but to get a job in their hometown. So yeah, I hope that that is the case.
Yes. I mean, I can, I can jump in on that because that is something we've thought about. As you said, you know, within the law, we can't require that hiring be made only from certain zip codes or localities, but we can encourage all of our tenants to advertise their open positions in our local paper. We do have a local paper. We also have several Facebook groups that I'm already a member of and have been for quite some time that we can, if if, you know, if a tenant would like us to post that and help promote some of those positions within social media, we'd be more than happy to help do that because yes, it would be fantastic. And it would also cut down on commuting and it would be a great way to give local people a place to work that they can even walk or bike to, which would be fantastic.
Yes, thank you. And it reduces our carroom footprint too, so.
Always a good, always a good thing.
Yes, thank you.
Good. Thanks, everybody. And then I just want to thank the whole, the whole project team for their thoughtful outreach. The Design Review Board for all the extensive review and discussion that that was engaged, obviously, the residents and neighbors that were involved in in meetings and giving feedback. I mean, I think the picture that we see right now, the before and after says it all. I'm really excited the fact that, you know, this is the second project in a row. We're filling in a blight or removing blight and filling in with something that's really nice. I I I'll call it Boho Malibu Diamond Head, Oz or Sydney like coastal development with a hint of Latin American 1960s. And I think Councilmember Gary, you know exactly what I mean. Latin American, urbanist, modernist sort of architecture with a twist. So via via the Guadalupe, you can hashtag that or put it in an article. But anyway, super nice stuff and really, really impressed. And yeah, I'm going to echo what Councilmember Gary said. We need to put people to work, like we need to, it's what's, what's important about having a project, a process that works. But we do it quickly, but we get lots of good comments and we have a great project team proponents that are thoughtful and understand why that is important. Because the quicker we get this stuff done, but in a good way, that's transparent and open and people feel like they've been heard and modifications are made. Then people get to work building things, spending money on on construction, which helps our economy. And then we, when it's done, we put people to work and, you know, we need more jobs than ever. So really, really impressive process and really impressive design. And and with that, we can close. Let me make sure I'm just doing this correctly. And close the public comment period again and public hearing. And so with that, I would like to adjourn the motion to the City Council adopt resolution 2021 2021 dash 21 approving regular coastal permit conditional use permit designer view case plan review and categorical exemption pursuant to secret guidelines to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a new two-story commercial building with a roof deck at 951 Seacoast Drive and the CMU dash two commercial mixed use on. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Briggs, second.
Great. Thank you so much. And City Clerk Kelly, take it away. I mean, Carvalho.
Thank you. We have a motion by Aguirre, second by Spriggs to adopt resolution 2021 dash 21. Councilmember Aguirre, how do you vote? Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Briggs, aye.
Mayor Didina, how do you vote?
You know, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate all the public input and look forward to when we can do this in person, but yeah, really, really impressive stuff. And with that, we will adjourn the open session. Thanks, everybody. And then we'll go to closed session. Thanks.
Thanks, everyone who attended.